Evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without any doubt, in the resolve of the liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for braving the cold and joining us this evening. We'll start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Sarda.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Offen.
President.
Mybaugh.
Here.
Maynard.
Here.
Moser.
Johnson.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
All right. You have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of October 22, 2018. What is your pleasure?
The minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission about our minutes? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Now you have before you the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion about the bills? Would anyone from the public like to address us about this item? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Offen.
Aye.
Mybaugh.
Aye.
Maynard.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sarda.
Aye.
Burdick.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Now we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Commission, and members of the public. A few things here. First of all, to start out, I want to remind everybody of our mission, which is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And with that, I have some things to -- good news and some bad news, so I'll give you the good news first. Tomorrow, I'll invite the media to join us. We will be removing the barricades from the Pine Street Bridge, and we'll have sort of our first inaugural drive over on the Pine Street Bridge at 1:30 PM tomorrow. So we have a couple of special things planned there. So if you can join us, that would be great, media, and if any of the commission would like to come as well. It'll be chilly because you'll be outside, but we're going to just celebrate a little bit and also as a thank you to the school that's put up in the neighborhood with a lot of construction and a lot of noise for a lot of months. So we're gonna have some vehicles that couldn't previously pass over the bridge be available to do that. Also, I want to remind everybody of the special election that's coming up on December 11, and that's, of course, for the opt-out associated with the aquatics facility. Only registered voters that reside within city limits can vote. The locations for polling will be Fire Station Number Two, that's the North Station, and City Hall. The polls will be open on that Tuesday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Absentee voting will be at City Hall beginning November the 26th, that's a Monday, and accessible during normal business hours, which is 8 to 5. You do have to register to vote and to be able to absentee or to be able to vote in the election, and there's various places, including online, Yankton County Auditor or City Hall, where you can receive the application to register for vote. So we do have the ballot available online to view right now, and because that wasn't budgeted for a special election, we will be budgeting from that from the general fund. So as we get closer, every commission meeting, I'll pepper in some more information about questions we're getting, et cetera. The questions that we're getting so far, most of them are associated with when is the special election, and when can we absentee vote, and can I vote, and a lot of folks asking, can I vote, who don't live in city limits. So we're trying to cover the questions that are directed at us on Facebook as well and also with our Twitter. So please let us know if you are hearing things, and we can provide information to the public on that topic. Eighth Street is coming along, but we hit a little bit of a weather issue this weekend, as you all know. Based on that, our engineering department determined that it would be best to hold off on paving asphalt on the side streets, that's West Side Drive and Park Street, until spring. So last week, we were going to pave, and we hit a problem with the asphalt provider. They had a breakdown at their plant, and this week, we really don't have enough time that looks like good weather days to do it, and because the ground was frozen, it's gonna be wet underneath, the engineers are recommending that we not. So I think I'm glad that maybe the residents of those two streets aren't here. They're not gonna be disappointed, and we certainly understand that. We're gonna work hard with them to put down some temporary crushed concrete for them. We'll take special attention to make sure we're paying attention to potholes, et cetera. We'll write them a letter and communicate with them. It just probably isn't gonna be a job well done if we do it, try to do it, in a hurry this week. So the engineers are going to be communicating with the residents. I'll tell them, and we apologize for that, but weather is weather. Commissioner Gross is gonna give us a little update on MSAC, so I'll let him take the mic.
Just a quick update. The Corps has decided that MSAC and the City of Yankton need to take a different approach. They're going to break the study into two pieces instead of just do one study, and so the initial cost will be less. What they hope to determine is the best approach, so they don't have to do engineering on two or three approaches. So overall, they hope to reduce the cost of the study, but we will -- you'll see a Phase One, and then you'll see a Phase One-A or One-B, and so it just won't take more time. It'll just seem to take more time. But this is their suggestion, their recommendation, and so that's where we're going forward. I hope at our next meeting that we will have letters of support ready for us to sign, approve, sign, and send to the Corps. It also appears that MSAC might be the lead agency, not us, but at this point, we're still the lead agency. So this may be able to change also, given -- as the Corps works through this process, it's new to them. This was a new law. We were the first test case. So we're gonna see some of these things change along the way.
And have they determined whether or not we'll have a conference call or a meeting?
December 3rd is our next scheduled stakeholder meeting, but it may be a conference call rather than a meeting, and so we don't know at this point. Either that, or we move it from Niobrara back to Yankton. So we'll know in the next couple of days, weeks, where that meeting will be and when it'll be for sure.
Gotcha. Thank you. The only other thing I have for the commission is a reminder that if you would like to attend the city Christmas party, which is December 7, and you have not already done so, please contact Colleen or I and let us know if you're attending, and if you're bringing a guest, no later than this Friday. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right. Then we'll move on to public appearances. Now is the time for persons to address the city commission on items not listed on the agenda. We have one scheduled public appearance, Dennis Shoemaker. So you wanna step to the podium and let us know what you're here to talk about.
You got a peddler's permit you gotta apply for to come over here and work. I do tree work, take out stumps, tree stumps, and I've applied for this permit for the last number of years, and you've always give it to me. And apparently, this year, you're gonna charge like $25 a day or $75 a week or $200 a month. Well, my question is, I never really know how many I'm gonna have in a week or in a month, or if even anybody's gonna call me. So to spend 200 bucks and nobody calls me, well, then I'm just out. So I guess what I'm asking, is there a chance that I might be able to go up to the counter of the city and get like a permit on a per-day basis of what I need, 25 bucks or whatever, and buy it over the counter? The way I understand, now, if I apply now, I have to wait for you guys to okay it, which sometimes could take, you know, if you got a meeting every two weeks, could take up to two weeks, which is a while. There's a lot of people aren't really that patient. They kinda want it done now. And I don't know if you -- is it something you'd ask to go out there and look at before you okay these things, or you just look at it, at the permits and verify it that way and say either yea or nay?
If the commission would like to change their ordinance, they certainly can direct staff to do so if they'd like to consider something like that. It's not required in state statute that you approve those. That could be done at administrative level if the commission so should choose.
So, okay, clarify what the ordinance is now? You can approve them on your own or not?
Now, we can't. Now, all the peddler's license comes to you, and you, you know, approve them, usually under consent unless there's one that you wanna talk about, and then you guys set the fees as well. So you could change that to give, you know, the staff, Al or I's office, or just give me, so I would, you know, have one of the -- probably finance office makes the most sense because they deal with the licenses to provide those permits, peddler's licenses, and you don't necessarily see them. Part of the benefit is having you all see who is in the community, working in the community, but we could certainly send out that information to everyone if you choose to do it that way. That would be up to you.
Is there any commission desire to perhaps see that change proposed at a future meeting?
You know, I'd hate to make it difficult for a person to run a business in the community. So I think we should research or pursue an option to see if there is another opportunity to make it a little more easier for an individual to have a business.
I agree.
Or if your staff would like to, or the city attorney would like to pursue that.
Well, or give the administration the authority would be what you're really saying.
Correct.
I agree. I think it sounds only reasonable and fair, and I believe that the city does the research, and she can also -- the city staff can also come to us if they think there's a problem. We could still override that on an individual basis. So I think it's very reasonable.
Sounds like there's perhaps a majority that would like to consider that change, so...
We'll take a look at the policies, and then I believe Colleen has your information. We can get back to you as we look into some procedures, and I'm guessing we're okay for a couple of months, or are you okay?
Right, yeah. Till the first of the year, I'm good for, so.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's a chance, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Dennis.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the commission at this time about an item not on our agenda? All right. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one is a possible quorum event on December 7, 2018, for the City of Yankton Christmas Party, during which there will be no official commission action. Number two is the introduction, first reading, and establishing November 26, 2018, as the second reading of ordinance number 1012 regarding our gas franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy. Number three is a setting the date of November 26, 2018, at 6:00 PM in this room at the Technical Education Academy for the next work session of the Yankton City Commission. And at this point, do you have an idea for a topic, Amy?
Yes, we will be discussing the proposed, will be a draft still at the time, lease with Great Life for the Fox Run course, so we'll be walking through that this week on Thursday with the Gulf Advisory Board and our city attorney. They've been forwarded a copy, and then we'll be walking through it with the public and you that evening, so people can ask questions. They can certainly come to the public meeting, but if we're ready on the 26th, then we'll schedule that for the 10th, so you will have a couple of weeks of feedback as well. But the work session is open to the public, but I wouldn't ask you to act that same evening because there's also a meeting that night. We'd like to schedule that for the 10th, so you have time to hear from the public.
Number four is establishing November 26, 2018, as the date for a public hearing in consideration of the applications for renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses for the 2019 licensing period. Number five is consideration of memorandum 18-234 regarding a request to have a small fireworks show as part of the holiday parade of lights and treat lighting ceremony. What is your pleasure?
I want the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion about the consent agenda items? Does anyone -- would anyone from the public like to address the commission on any of these items? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We have no old business tonight, so we'll move on to new business, and the first thing is the 2018 city survey results presentation.
Yes, so I'll have you invite you all to look behind you. Thank you, Dwayne. And we'll walk through this a little bit. As you know, a couple of years ago, we decided to take the survey in a little different direction. We decided not to conduct it every year, rather every other year. So in '17, we did not do a mail mailing of the citywide survey, but we did this year, this August. So we send them out, we give people about a month to respond, and we just had a little bit of a busy October, so this report's coming to you a little later than it normally does. But I'd like to give you a little bit of the background information and talk a little bit about the themes and what we've heard. So we won't go through each question, but if you have a specific question on the survey you're curious about, I'm happy to give you some information about it. So again, we just went through our mission, but it's important to read it again, to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And part of this survey, part of that is the engage element, so we're making sure that we get a chance, not just to be available for people to give us feedback, but also invite them to give us feedback, and sometimes that makes a difference. So the survey was sent out consecutively from 2009 to 2016. Again, like I said, we did not send out the survey in '17, and then we added the online option in 2018. So everyone got a postcard. You should've got a postcard indicating that they could fill the survey out online, and then we sent the random sample to 1,200 households. We did have 458 that completed the actual paper survey, and then 76 online. By my math, that's 534, and that's a pretty good turnout, pretty good response rate for a survey. As time goes on, we've talked about maybe directing people more online. However, some people do still, it's still apparent that it's popular to fill it out on paper as well. Overall, we had really positive results. Many, most of all of the categories were either well above average or, you know, in the excellent range. Parks Department and Water Department was slightly down from the responses that were received in former years, and we think we know why. So a lot of the parks areas that pulled their scores down was associated with the Memorial Park Pool, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the comments. The comments always sort of mirror what happens with the survey responses. Also, a lot of comments about water rates, which I think everybody anticipated would probably happen. So these weren't -- scores in the Water Department, Utilities Department weren't pulled down because of quality of water, things of that nature, but rather the rates and the costs of what that is to the consumer. Library, police, and recycling, they all went up slightly. So I don't know, Dana and Linda and the staff there are doing an extra great job, and that was recognized both in the response as well as the comments. Police Department went up, so they're taking care of crime, and I think they've introduced some new things into the department that's been very positive for the community, and they've seen that. So the survey reflected that. And then since we've implemented our single-stream recycling, we have received a lot of positive input on that, and I think that's what pulled up the actual data scores on recycling. So we have a few goals for our survey. One of them is to engage with people and make sure that we're connecting with them, get their communication and feedback, and then understand what their needs, wants, and interests are. And single-stream recycling is really a really good story for that. That's really the one that we heard the most about in previous years and knew we needed to implement, not just based on the survey results, but also from what we heard throughout the year. So we do review the data at the staff level. We talk about that internally. We identify where we think we may have issues. As I said, this year, I think really things were reflective by what we already knew, so we're responding to those things, and it's really still a valuable tool because it validates what we believe that we know. The comments are provided to all the department heads. You can't weigh comments, you know? We can't put a numeric score on comments, but I think they're very valuable because people really, on an anonymous survey, have no problem telling you exactly what they think it is we should do or stop doing. We did share those comments with you, and I'm gonna share some with everyone tonight as well. We do, because we do respond to the data and to your comments, despite the comments that says no one will read this anyway, so I don't know why I'm commenting. So again, recycling, we received a lot of comments on that. We have had a positive outcome that was implemented in 2017. We added the semi-automation to all of our refuse collection and recycling and implemented the uniform roll carts. This was a number put together in October, so this would even be more now, but 840 tons of recyclable materials did not go into landfill just from one year of recycling, having a recycling program in place. So I think that's a really big success story. And as much as we thought we were going to really have a hard time with the size and color of the carts, we did not receive comments about colors and size of carts like we did last year. So library, the scores were up slightly in the library, but we did receive a lot of comments about the library, that we need a larger library, that there's poor parking at the library, and that the library could use an update. So those are just little ticklers for you to think about and maybe in the future, consider. People are recognizing that. When it comes to water, again, the comments reflected exactly what the scores reflected. Water went down a little bit, and then we heard rates are too high, water and sewer rates too high, rates could be a little lower. I like that person. That's the positive spin or the Midwestern. Well, rates could be a little lower. So we understand those comments, and we also understand that we're working on a project, so that's why the rates are the way they are. Again, parks was down slightly, mostly associated with the quality of the Memorial Park Pool, and that's no surprise, as Dive in Yankton has been communicating and educating the community now for over, well over, a year about the aquatics facilities in our community. So we heard a lot of comments like this, we're satisfied with the Summit Activity Center Pool, very dissatisfied with the outdoor pool, very dissatisfied with outdoor pool, and then we need a new pool. So lots of comments on the survey associated with that as well. We had a little bit of discussion, I guess, from the public more this year than we typically do on stormwater and flooding, and that didn't surprise me based on the fact that when the survey went out, we just come off of those two months of really heavy rains. So a lot of comments like flash flooding, floods bad in front of my house, continued flooding the creek at Morgan Park, culverts need to be addressed. Part of that is just because of the amount and the unlikely occasion that, again, that that could happen. However, we have responded to that already by working with the James River Watershed on that grant. We've applied, as you know, for a utility preservation grant and CDGB funds, so I think people noticed that, so it was something fresh in their mind to comment on. Again, that's Mother Nature working against us, but I think our staff did a good job addressing that, and we'll be working on that now in the following years if we're successful with our other grant funds. So no survey would be complete without discussion about snow, and I'd like to do this before we actually have snow, but luckily, we didn't have a plowable snow yet. So we did hear a lot about large piles of snow on sidewalk, I hate the piles of snow left in front of my driveway, don't remove the snow from my curb, why don't we have snowgates, those kind of comments. I do wanna touch a little bit on snowgates because we did have an unusual amount of comments about those, saying, you know, why isn't that something we implement? And we can certainly talk more about that at budget time, if that's something the commission would desire to do. Snowgates work in tandem, they're mounted on motor graders, for those of you that don't know that. We would need approximately four more of those pieces of equipment because we would need to double up. Those are each about $250,000, and I'm spitballing it, but that's roughly what they cost. They're also, the gates themselves are about $15,000, and I think we would need six of those to outfit all the motor graders. We would have to make more investments into the snowgate program as well because we would need additional staff, and we would undoubtedly slow the process down quite a bit. So that's just something for people to understand. That's not saying we're not gonna do it, or we're never gonna be interested in looking into it. That'd be up to something if the commission wants to make the investment, and we could talk about that during budget season and whether or not that's valuable. It's also not a perfect science. We've studied snowgates a lot, and if it's not the right type of snow, it's not a valuable tool. So that's something to consider as well. But we do wanna address them and talk about them with the community because the community's talking about them with us. So we can certainly continue to have the conversation. We don't currently have them, and hopefully, we won't need them, and hopefully, we don't have to do a lot of snow removal, but that doesn't look good. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the survey or talk to you all about what your feelings are. Technology gives us a lot of different options. Some cities no longer do citywide surveys because they feel people have real-time ability to communicate with elected officials and city staff. Some people really like the survey as a tool. Some people go to online only. There's also vendors that provide new tools where you can, that we're looking into, that you can, you know, throw out an issue and people can respond in real time. How do you feel about snowgates, for example? You know? What's unfortunate there is you don't have the opportunity to educate, but if you're looking for people's quick opinion on something, you can get it. So there are tools like that available as well. Also, we do hear that some people don't have internet access, or they don't have the ability to easily get internet access or go to the library, so they like having the option of paper. Any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about your follow-up process? What do you do with these results? Do you develop action plans in some cases?
We do. Well, you know, one of the things that we'll do this year in budget season is we'll bring up snowgates and see if it's something that you all wanna talk about. That's where we took the single-stream recycling. I think we've well addressed the flooding and water situations, stormwater situation. Dive in Yankton, and you all took action on trying to address the outdoor aquatics facility, so I think that's one that we're to kinda wait and see what happens with that. The snowgates is definitely one to talk about, as is the library, and that'll kinda be more of a long-term discussion. I realize that, but those are the things to start talking about. So one thing I thought I would do is after we get past our special election and some of the other things, is I would do an article about the comments. I think enough people commented about snowgates, for example, where engineering and I can get together and put together something for the newspaper and put out online, hey, this is really, was important to you all with the survey, and here's what we found out, and here's what, where we're at right now, and some things to be aware of, and that we'll bring it up in the spring to see if it's something that we wanna pursue. So those types of things are in the action plan. They just haven't gotten done because we got diverted by one of the things that's in the survey.
Any more commission discussion on the survey? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission about the survey results?
I would just like to say that the snow comments are really positive compared to what I get.
That's because we take the snow away, and you have to decide.
Thank you, city manager, Amy Leon, for that presentation. Certainly a lot to... Certainly a lot to process there. Number two, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-212 in support of resolution 18-73 regarding a land-water and conservation fund grant for Westside Park Playground replacement equipment. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Todd, would you like to share with the public what we're planning to do here?
Thank you, Commissioners. The playground unit that is at Westside Park is 1989, and it was also somewhat funded by the Land Water Conservation Fund. That's the same type of system that was in Riverside Park that we replaced two years ago. Again, getting replacement parts for it. Time has come and gone, so we can no longer do that. So as the slides break down, we have to board them up and things like that. Also, that landscaping wall around there, it's sand for fall material, the woods seen its better day, so it's just time for a refresh there. We would coordinate this also with the museum. I'm blanking on the official name of the museum.
Dakota Territorial.
The Dakota Territorial Museum that's in the park. As it moves out to the Mead Building, again, they're also going to take the buildings and the other stuff there along Summit Street. So as that happens, we've started to work with District Three to do a master plan for that entire park, to see how we can incorporate the entire park. Right now, there's the paths down around the pond, there's a shelter, there's a restroom. We've got the skating park, we've got the tennis courts. We also have the stone arches over on, there's a stone arch and some other planters over on the southeast corner, but there's no sidewalks, you just drive by them. So anyway, we're going to work with District Three as we look at a master plan for that entire park. Again, if people come over from the hospital, whether they're visiting people at the hospital or if it's workers at the hospital, to do a little bit of a trail system through that park, up through the hills, utilize the trees, utilize those stone planters, and then maybe move the playground system down the hill a little bit, so it's a little bit in a flatter area, closer to the sidewalks down by the pond, and again, get a path that goes all the way around the pond. So there's some master planning that we'll do with that park, but again, the playground needs to be refreshed. We've had good luck with land-water conservation funds in the past. 50,000 used to be the max, and we, and in the past couple of projects we've applied for, we've got 40,000. They've now upped the max to 75, so I don't know what that means on what amount we'll come in at, but we're going to apply for the full 75. Randy Kittle with the state, he administers the Land Water Conservation Fund for the state of South Dakota, is going to be in town on Thursday afternoon to do a walk-through of that park and the area and talk about it, so we can have a little bit better impression on it, so.
Is there any more commission discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number three, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-228 regarding a bid award to purchase a 2019 Chevy Tahoe for the police department, and that will be purchased through the state bid for a price of $49,104, which includes equipment and installation. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
I, I, let's see, Taylor put this together, but the, the option was put out there for a local dealership, Bob Hunoff of North Town, who advised that he cannot provide the vehicle locally at the state bid. What's his reason why he can't?
I don't know why he can't do that. We always try to, when we have the state bid, we always call the local vendor, whether it's the Ford dealership or North Town, and see if they are able to do that. I don't know if it's a, you know, limitation on their franchise, or if it's just how they, you know, what they price it out at, but I don't know the answer to why that is, that they can't, but we wanted to make sure we asked.
So we're doing it as a courtesy, that we're reaching out to them?
Correct, because if we can buy it locally, we want, you know, want to.
So it's not like they're not on a list of approved dealerships or anything?
No, we can, if they'll, if they'll match the state bid, we will certainly go locally.
Have they done it in the past?
Some have, some haven't. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
Yeah, I think availability, too, of the vehicles as well, whether or not they have that vehicle or ability to get it easily.
Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number four, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-230 and resolution 18-78 regarding a bid award to purchase two vehicles for the police department. These are 2020 Ford Interceptor SUVs, and will be purchased at the state bid price of $42,000 each, and this also includes equipment installation. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum, purchase vehicles.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
So again, it's the same deal with our local Lewis and Clark Ford. They are not able to follow through on this. We're using Land Motor Company out of Oneida, South Dakota.
Yes, and this one also can be the, sometimes the police-rated vehicles are limited to what, you know, how many dealerships can get them, so maybe, I don't, I don't know, I didn't deal with this item directly, but, you know, again, because they're specially made for law enforcement, that they're more limited availability.
Is there any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number five, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-226 and resolution 18-77 regarding a library contract between the city of Yankton and Yankton County. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
Question. If we have over 1,000 cardholders from the county, at $35 a head, that would be 35,000, not 24,000.
Correct. What's the question?
So we're cutting a deal.
We're all getting a wonderful deal at the library.
Thank you.
Dana, is there anything you want to add?
Um.
We just asked that you step to the microphone. Thank you.
We went to the county commission meeting and just kind of gave them a little infographic about how many county cardholders that we have and the services we provide, and they were complimentary for the, everything that we offered for them. They were complimentary of the story walk on the bridge, so they did, they were happy to give us that money, but we did, this 24,000 is an increase. We were getting 18,000 a year previously from them, so I believe last year was the first year that we got 24,000, so it did go up a little bit, not quite 35,000, but it's there, we're happy with it, so.
Any more commission discussion? Thank you, by the way, Dana. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number six, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-232 regarding resolution 18-80, which is a plat of track one and track two of 3715 and 3717, Panina Street. Russell Leonard, Gloria Leonard, and Russell Leonard, again, are the owners. What is your pleasure?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number seven, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-233 regarding resolution 18-81, a plat of the planned address of 311 Tulip Lane. Matthew Christiansen, managing member of White Crane Estates LLC, is the owner. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number eight, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-236 regarding acceptance of the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street improvements for Phase 2A of the Westbrook Estates Residential Development Project. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number nine, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-214 and resolution 18-72 for the request of a special events, of the special events parking ordinance, number 933, to be in place during the Holiday Lights Parade on November 29, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
We have a motion and a second. Brittany, did you want to talk a little bit about where we'll have road closure for this event, and maybe a little bit about the event itself?
Commissioners, Holiday Festival of Lights, it's our third year of, you know, branding it as Holiday Festival of Lights, and since the first year, we have requested a special events, no parking. One, just a safety concern, it's darker than the Riverboat Days Parade, and you have lots of little kids out, you know, trying to run. We don't require that the floats hand out candy, but there are some that do, and so just keeping those cars out of the way has been mainly a safety reason, but then also just to get a better view of the parade. We start it at 3 o'clock, because from 4 to 6, we ask that the Meridian District businesses host different holiday-type activities in their businesses as a way to kind of partner with the Meridian District and get people in the stores, realizing what we, the stores that we do have down there. And so, starting at 3 o'clock, we're not in a bind at 6 o'clock when the activities are done and the parade needs to be starting. We also ask for the closure, so that way we don't have ongoing traffic. I know the first year, that was a little bit of a problem, and then side-street traffic, there's nothing crossing the parade. Holiday Festival of Lights, from 4 to 6, there's the activities. At 6 o'clock, the parade will start. We have changed the route this year. One of the comments that we got last year, the parade went, the parade went down third and then up second. I don't know if that's the correct terminology, but it went this way. The, the tree lighting is immediately after, and so when the parade was finished on Third Street, people started walking, and then they hit the parade on Second Street, and so there was a lot of congestion with traffic and walkers, and so we're going the opposite way now, so we're going down second and up third to kind of help alleviate that congestion there. After the parade, we will have the tree lighting ceremony. We approximate that'll start around 6:45 or 7, but we always advertise that it is immediately following the parade, and then right after the tree lighting, we will have some fireworks.
Should be a fun time for everyone. Is there any more commission discussion on this item?
How many entrants in the parade this year?
Right now, we are only at about 27, but I have learned that Yankton is a slightly last-minute community, and so I'm not too worried just yet. I have started, you know, personally getting, getting ahold of people and asking if we can count on them to do it again this year, or reaching out to them and asking them to participate. So hopefully, last year we had 60 floats, which was an increase from 42 the first year, so I'm really hoping we can kind of hit that 70 mark. And then I think we want to cap it at 75, just because it is a cold time of the year, and we want to respect everyone's time and their temperature. We don't want them freezing out there, so hopefully we get more.
Any more discussion? Does anyone in the audience want to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number 10, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-231 regarding a bid award for surplus property. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Number 11, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-225 and resolution 18-79 for self-contained breathing apparatus equipment for the fire department at a cost of $239,208.25. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum to purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item?
I believe we had, we had applied for a grant. Do we know, or did we not get it, or is it still up in the air?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll let Tom address you. We don't get to hear very much from Tom, so he gets Monday nights for fire training, so let's hear from Tom, more on the grant.
We did apply for a grant. We had two counties, the departments, we got through the whole process, got into the stack of, of the approved applications, and they're out on the money. So we got a long way, but we can play part of it.
And we did have this budgeted in case this didn't happen, right? We did, because we've applied in previous years and have been unsuccessful, and this year we were successful, but there was no funding, or not enough.
Any more commission discussion? Tom, thank you for attempting to get a grant, award for this. Would anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Number 12, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 18-235 regarding a limited-access easement on Marn Creek, tract 21. What is your pleasure?
I move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.